I want to call the Budget Work Session of Davis County Fiscal Court to order. If you would, bow your heads please. Our Heavenly Father, thank you for this wonderful spring day. Thank you for our community, thank you for our family, particularly thank you for all those first responders that keep us safe morning, noon, and night. Give us the wisdom and understanding to use the fruits of our citizens' labor to the best of our ability and for their benefit. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning Commissioners and all those folks who have nothing better to do than tune us in and watch this Budget Work Session. Mr. Hendricks, are you ready? I'm gonna have you, are you turned on over there?
I am now.
Okay. I'm gonna have you go through the budget pretty much, and Commissioners if you have any questions or comments, just interrupt and we'll try to get an answer. Oh, and by the way, again, happy birthday Commissioner Collier, we will be singing you a song somewhere.
Thank you Judge. I want you to know I've been tuning my vocal cords all morning.
And Commissioner Castleton will be doing a special birthday clog. County Treasurer.
In the budget packet that you have, we'll run through that, and then there's a sheet that I just handed you that we'll talk about at the end. Things that have changed that we know about since I prepared the initial document that you're reviewing, and we'll talk about those a little bit later. On the Budget Assumption page A2, initially the budget was prepared assuming no additional taxes, no additional debt, and it shows the sheriff funding, and we'll talk about that again later. Sheriff funding at 2 million, salary COLA, 2 percent, what the pension rates are, and then we'll talk about most of these in detail. And the tax assumption's gonna be obvious when we end up talking about this as to what to do, when you, as you realize that the expenditures exceed the revenue, and court will be making a decision about that later.
Ms. Hendricks, just real quick, on the retirement percentages, I would note that those are probably going to change, not just normally with the 12 and a half percent COLA, but we just were notified of an increase in non-hazardous and hazardous duty because of the additional-
My understanding though is capped by the 12 percent, so they'll be placed at the end, not for this budget.
That is correct. That is correct. I just wanted to make that note that these percentages are gonna have an additional percentage added on to the, to the end of it. Okay.
Jim, do accounting rules require us to book those future increases, or we just do the current?
No, because we're on the regulatory methods, the modified cash method, we're not, we are not required, you're only required to book what your actual expense is for that period.
Okay.
Now, if you pick up the audit financials-
There you go.
As you know, they are converted to a GAAP type basis.
Right, right.
And then there's footnote that does talk about the liability.
Okay. And that became a requirement, what, two or three years ago?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Go ahead.
Going through the detail page, on page A3 is your agency funding page, and basically all I say is about that one, it's the same as it was last year within about $400. So, no new agencies received funding, and people who requested increase were not granted. But basically that agency funding page is the same for last year as it is this year. Are there any questions on that page?
I might note that approximately 55, 60 percent of that agency funding goes to fund the airport operations, the economic development operations, and the OMPC, the, all of those are joint agencies between the city and the county. There's about 60,000 of that funding, if you go down to the middle, Levy Trust, that is money that doesn't come out of our general fund, isn't that correct Jim? It actually comes out of a trust fund, and we are, we are provided guidance on how we spend that money.
Not exactly a trust fund, it's a proxy.
That's, that's correct, yeah.
It's 40,000 bucks a year, and that money is in agreement that that's spent, so you're correct.
Right.
When you, when you adjust out all the items that are either government programs that you're financing, like airport, or what you just said, there's very little general fund tax money here.
Right. Okay, go ahead.
I just, I just want to thank you both for making that. I was prepared to address that myself, I got an email from a gentleman that kinda took a smack at us for funding agencies. And the reality is of the 988, 980, let's see, for the coming budgets, 987. And of that, when I did my math, it's only about 210 that's actually going to what I would call discretionary, that we choose to fund, and those are for the very low-end citizens of our, economically, the low-end citizens of our community that need assistance.
Thank you Commissioner, I received the same comment from, I think it was the same gentleman, and the comment was, we should be using that money for other issues. My, my statement would be simply that if we didn't fund those particular agencies that you're talking about, particularly the homeless, DC caps, the dental clinic, those kinds of things, that we would probably see those same individuals at the hospital emergency room where costs are 10 times higher than our cost for DC caps, in our jails, utilizing the time of our policing departments. So, to me, it's a, it's a very good investment with a huge, huge return. Very small upfront costs, downstream costs.
And I did not take time to respond to him.
I did not either, because it was a series of emails that came in, and your response wouldn't matter.
Right.
Next item.
Page A4 is a list of the major capital expenditures, not all expenditures, but the significant ones. I know you all have looked at this, I don't want to just read it to you. How, do you want to have a discussion on this page, or is everybody comfortable with the details?
The only comments that I would make to the Commission and to the public is, these are anticipated capital expenses, they're major. Doesn't mean that we are gonna do that, doesn't mean that we have to do that, doesn't mean that all that money will be spent, simply because if you look at the first one under the Parks Department, the HFC Horse Fork Creek Water Park, that's a carryover from the year before of funds that we had dedicated to the Horse Fork Creek Park. We didn't get to spend all those funds, or we're not. This will, this will complete that project though. The 385,000, Commissioner Loth and you, I've had those discussions, right now we're expending monies to do a study on what structure we might want to take across that creek. The 385, I think George's, was the max we thought it would cost if we did everything, but we may do something in between there. We're waiting for the study to come back to tell us, but to be prudent, if we decide to do everything, we thought that we needed to have that money in there. Fire trucks for Yelvington and Knottsville, you will see an addition, typically we buy one truck, this year we bought two as a result of an accident and some trading around. I would expect that to go back to one perhaps. All the other things are pretty self-explanatory, but I just wanted to make the statement that understanding that doesn't necessarily mean we've gotta spend it all. And, but we're being prudent in anything that we-
The other point that's good would be that, so you could come in and say, well for this year, let's just throw out half of it.
We just shove it down the road.
You've just moved it.
That's correct.
These are not discretionary items.
That is correct.
These vehicles and the equipment will have to be replaced.
Right.
So you can shift it, but you haven't solved the problem.
Correct.
It's just moved it.
I would also note on the Enterprise Fund, which is a landfill and a transfer station, we've got a capital expense of 1.3 million dollars, and you might notice that that's not the big items, the big boys in there, the front end, or the Caterpillar dozers and the big trash compactor. But those boys, it's a big operation, and they require big toys to play with, so.
Right.
The good news is, and I think this is reflective of the fiscal responsibility that the court and this Commission have shown, we're going to be able to pay for this with cash, with no bonding. So that's what we all decided we wanted to do early on, and I think we've done a good job of it.
And that's cash in the Enterprise Fund.
Cash in the Enterprise Fund, that's correct. We do not mix Enterprise Fund money and General Fund money.
Right.
Correct.
And if I could just speak very quickly on the fire trucks, we adopted a policy just for the public that might be watching, we adopted a policy a couple, three years ago that we would put in 200,000 for a base truck, and if the volunteer station wanted a, some bells and whistles on that truck, then they've gotta up to any of themselves and pay for it with dues they collect, so.
Correct. The, and just for your information, the rescue boat, I know you know, that thing got slung out into the middle of a field a couple of years ago, they've been limping along with it. I think we did receive some insurance proceeds, didn't we?
I think so.
And so those insurance proceeds just went into the General Fund, now we're buying the, buying the boat. Any, before the Treasurer moves on, any question or comment regarding these items? Okay?
Well, A5 is a summary of your major road projects. The top of it shows the current year. You're paying for a million, 230 out of the road fund, 370 out of LGEA, for a total of a million six, and you add that to the state reimbursable projects of 589 for a total of about 2122. And if you look at the section at the bottom, you can see that's approximately the same as the total expended the prior year. This page gives you a total, so it's all on one page, otherwise we get to talking about the pieces, it's hard to follow, but there's all of the road capital projects in one spot.
So in effect, we got about $300,000 less in state reimbursables this year that we're having to make up out of the General Fund.
Correct.
Any questions, comments?
Mark, could you speak to how much of this resurfacing is, or of our dollars, is due to either damage from flooded roads or a harsh winter season?
For the most part, it's not due to any particular winter event or flood event, it's just accumulation over years of those things.
Okay.
So, not one that has popped up in the last 12 months, it's, they've all gradually decreased in their conditions, is what we're doing.
Mark, with this, the money that we have in there, we're going to continue repaving, what, roughly 30 miles?
I think it's just over 30 miles, is what we've got scheduled to propose to Fiscal Court.
Oh, I'm sorry guys, that was me. That's J.C. Young, I wonder what he wants. So if we continue that paving schedule, we're on a good course, we pave roughly year old, could be repaved if needed every 16, 17 years, somewhere in that schedule?
I think on average, looking at the numbers, we're around 20, and that's where you want to be for a rural road in Kentucky.
Many, many other counties are on the 30 and 40 year.
I dare to say even more, yeah.
Even more, and some of our cities are the same.
Yes.
Same way, so.
Yep.
I think we've done a good job, and if, that's one of the things that I think all of you would agree, when you talk to your constituents, the one thing they want us to do is keep those roads paved and in safe condition, so I think we're doing a good job. Next.
Next page is just a summary of the appropriations and revenue for each item, totaling 72.8 million dollars. The next page, page B1, is the General Fund revenues, you, I know you've looked at them, reflects whatever increases we think might occur. The one big item to look at's in the middle of the page, the million three for Windcrest Acquisition Project reimbursements, you know, we've expended most of that money in this fiscal year. After we get finished, then we'll put the filing together to be reimbursed, that should come in. So that's a one-time item, obviously, it's just a receivable at June 30th that we'll collect in that fiscal year. The rest of the stuff is just pretty ordinary, normal. I will have the remainder of the Friendly Village CDBG and the KIA loan revenues in here, but they will be offset by the expenses, so they net to zero as far as impact.
Jim, if I can interrupt.
Go ahead.
On the E911 user fees, I'm just curious, have, I know when we go to conferences and trainings, they almost always talk about that across the state, the 911 fees are dropping because people are switching from landlines to cellphones, and I'm just curious, have you, could you, I don't expect you to have it today, but if you, if you could see what our trend has been over the last five or eight years or so?
Yeah, they call us about every two years to collect that information, I don't think ours has been impacted much.
Okay. Ours has been pretty steady then?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'm aware of what you're talking, they do, they'll put, in fact, we gathered a lot of information about two years ago to send them.
Okay.
They'll, they'll do that to try to get the legislature to change.
Right.
And, but yes, I have, I have some information available.
I don't want to throw you a curve because we haven't talked about this, but our portion of the emergency 911 center, I'm gonna round it to about 800,000. Of that 800,000, what roughly, 430,000 is paid for by the user fees that we get, the balance is supplemented by the General Fund money.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So, so we're not coming anywhere close, and I would say the city's not coming anywhere close to funding 911 operations, and that's why all the local governments have attempted to get the legislature to understand that and give us the ability, or take their, their ability to change things, and for whatever reason, the lobby must be a lot stronger than local governments. Okay?
The transfer routes just reflect what the budget for each fund, the balance required from the General Fund. So, if, we'll talk about the jail shortfall, for instance, you can see that increased by about 700,000 dollars. That's just the increase in the transfer route it took, based on the revenues and expenses of the jail, that's just the transfer it's gonna take, that is partially putting us in a deficit position. Several of you asked me, why did the convention center transfer jump from 22 to 28? That answer is simply, the report I gave last court meeting on the status of the insurance premium tax, we've just accumulated in the General Fund an extra 600,000 dollars, I need to, I've gotta move it over. So I don't want to amend this budget, so I'm just budgeted in next year. So that's, that only went up simply to reflect how much we're collecting for that piece of the insurance premium tax, so I can get that money moved over to the bond fund, that's it. No other, there's really no other issue there.
So let me ask you, when you say we had 600,000 extra that you're transferring, is that saying that we've collected 600,000 extra?
Absolutely.
And-
I only transfer over what we collect.
Okay. So, so let me ask you, have we budgeted for, if, if, most of these numbers are flat, they're the same for last, the 2018, 19 budget as they are for the 1920 budget, I might have said that backwards. And, and so you've raised this one 600,000, I guess my question is, do you anticipate that the 1920 is gonna have that excess in it also? Because if I understood you right, you just said you're raising this by 600.
This accumulated over several years.
Oh, okay.
I think the excess, see, I've already raised it to reflect the normal excess, this used to be 1.8 about two years ago, and now it's, you can see it's been 22 for a while.
Right.
But, so this was just above, like, you know, you have to estimate annually, is it going up 100, going up whatever?
Right.
And that, that's what the budget's reflected, but over a period of three or four years, I just ended up with extra. No, so it will not occur every year, that will not happen.
Okay.
That's too much money.
Okay.
The annual excess is probably gonna be closer to 200, but I'm budgeting-
But that's built in this number.
I'm budgeting that as we, as we go, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other, you, will you be talking here in a little bit about our bond payments and when some of them will be paid off and-
Yeah, we'll go through each, I thought we'd go through each fund.
Yeah, that's good.
Maybe not, I mean, I don't want, obviously we'll do it at any level you want to do it, but I don't want to-
That's fine.
I don't want to bore you.
Right.
I don't want to read the thing to you, because I know you don't want that, so.
Okay.
All I know to do is-
You're gonna cover what I want you to cover here.
We'll go page by page here.
Yeah.
And, and I'll just see if you've got any, I know some of you have questions marked on your sheet, we can just go page by page and see if you have questions, so. That's all I had for B2, anybody got any more comments on B2? Next page is County Attorney and other governmental offices. We will talk about the Sheriff's Office at the end of this presentation, so I'm gonna skip that for now. I did footnote, there's 30,000 dollars on that, somehow that just disappeared, I deleted it accidentally, so I'm adding it back. It's no, no comment attached to it, I just somehow deleted it.
I think Richard House was making a half-hearted attempt to show us that he's not costing us anything.
Coroner and Fiscal Court, it's really, I don't have a comment for either of those, they're not just normal.
What you, what you might look at most of these when you go through there, you're gonna see the roughly, an increase of the 2% in, in cost of living allowance and increases in pension cost.
That's it, that's what most of them are gonna be.
Occasionally, you might see an adjustment in insurance, but that's typically when they, you had a change of employee, say they went from a single policy to a family plan. While I'm thinking about it Jim, on average, you've talked to folks out in the state, what's been the average cost of living that have been given? I think the state said 2% this year and-
Typically somewhere around 2.
Okay, I've seen some give nothing.
People that I've spoken with, well, yeah, if they have the money, sure.
Some give nothing, some have given 3%, but I think we typically, we have looked at giving whatever the state's calculated as the cost of living, and understanding that in effect, a 2% cost of living would average 3% because we have a 3% increase in salary every three years.
Three years.
Every three years. It's kinda like, city gives a step, I think it's about 1 and 1/4% every year.
Right.
We give a 3% over every three years, it averages out to about 1. Okay?
Page 5, Treasurer and Human Relations, really nothing extra. Next page, Information Systems, Election Expense, Economic Development, again, just Courthouse Judicial Center and Operations Center for the Maintenance, there was really no big extraordinary items in this, in this period.
On the Judicial Center, most of that reimbursed by ALC?
It is.
Jim, what percentage did you use on utilities going up? I noticed, they look pretty noticeable.
The different departments just looked at what their actual has been, so I didn't do it like on a fixed percentage, they just look at what actual has been versus what was budgeted last year and made adjustments where necessary, so it just ref-
So it's pretty much flat compared to actual?
It's trying to reflect actual, yes.
Okay. All right.
Could you hold, hold on just a second?
Yep.
And go back to B8, Protection to Persons and Property, Juvenile Housing, explain to us where we spend that money.
That's for juveniles that are sent to Warren County.
Okay.
Yeah.
A lot of ours are deferred and sent to St. Benedict's and to-
St. Joseph.
St. Joseph Peacemen, I said St. Benedict's, I thought Charlie would catch me on that, and I think the Mary Kendall Home.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's been predominantly St. Joseph's the last period.
Right. And if you would recall, we were getting a heck of a bargain, I think at one time, we were reimbursing them 45 dollars a day per juvenile. We looked at it, we're paying the state, what, 100 and, I don't know, 125?
Was it 100?
So we gave them an increase, about 115 dollars a day per juvenile. And what that does is, that deputy that sits out there, it saves us the transportation cost, saves the sheriff the transportation cost of taking juveniles down. Another thing it does, I think it keeps them in our community where they have family-
Sure, and support.
-folks and support, so, anyway, I just wanted to point that out. Go ahead.
B9 is Fire Department, EMA. There's two fire trucks baked into this budget, as we saw on the capital expenditure page, there are some requested items that have not been included, and I'll, again, I'll cover those at the end.
Jim, if you, if you don't mind addressing the overtime pay, I talked to you earlier about that, just for anybody that might look at this or might be watching.
Yeah, the overtime is, is not your conventional, like you would think about a worker that works 40 hours a week, because that's a big number for overtime, but the reason for that is, is they work 24-hour shifts, so the way that, the overtime is actually scheduled, overtime, we just break it out in a different line, but it's because of the, the way that they work.
It's on 24, yeah, all 48, on 24, so that gives them about eight hours of overtime and a week's pay there, so. And the state actually requires us to figure it that way, if you recall, there were some communities that got into trouble.
Well, that's right. They, we were figuring it correctly, so we didn't get in problem, but there's lots of local governments got nailed big time.
Yes, they did.
I recall that.
Just a comment on EMA, and I know it's over on the other, but on line 548-00, Community Warning, in our discussion with EMA, we were talking about applying for more electronic sirens, and I asked, I think Commissioner, we asked how many you have left that are the old mechanical? He said, I think, four, but I believe there's actually five. We put 100,000 dollars in with the intention to replace all of them, just go ahead, bite the bullet, because with electronic, you can actually signal to them and they'll signal back, you can tell whether they're working or not, and when they fail, we have had occasion on the old mechanicals where we've had severe weather warnings and they not go off and we not know it. So we put the 100,000 dollars in, we had been trying to replace one a year and then get a grant for one, I've asked that he apply for the four, a grant for four, he's gonna try to get as much grant money as he can to do that. So for those, those folks who are out there in the areas that do not have electronic, would have the mechanical, hopefully by this time next year, we'll have them all, all replaced and updated.
On page B10, the, your ambulance service has a zero because of the negotiations, we weren't sure what it would be for that draft. At this point, we are prepared to put in 60,000 dollars, will appear in the first reading, that's obviously subject to change if we find out better information between now and then, but right now, the assumption would be that number will be 60,000 dollars.
So in that, Jim, is that in part of this budget or be added to the 60,000?
It's- It's, it's not in the bottom total, but it will be added into the budget. Though, that, there are some changes that we will propose at the end of the budget. That's one of those changes that will have to be made.
Uh, under the nine-one-one section, that CAD system, it's, it's really, that's, that's just what the existing count number says, CAD. It's really CAD, RMS, and MDQ, which are mobile data units. Uh, these are just part of the nine-one-one system that court had agreed to pay over, uh, the last two years. This is the amount, those, those are split over not just a twelve-month period, but some are over a twenty-four-month period. So for fiscal year twenty, there's three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, which was on your capital expense page earlier. That just reflects the amount of those systems that we will have to fund in this fiscal year. So it's, it's one time of three thirty-five.
Now, are the NDTs, are, are all these coming out of general fund, or are any of these coming out of sheriff and fire department for, for those?
This particular three thirty-five is coming from general fund.
General fund, okay.
Oh, they do have monies you, but this particular three thirty-five comes out of general fund.
Okay.
Uh, B11 is animal control.
Oh, look, can we go back to, to CAD or to nine-one-one? One of the things that we have been working on this year, the original agreement says that we will have a true-up period at the end of every year, and that has not been happening. And money that we would budget and pay into nine-one-one would just accumulate. And then they would spend that money as they saw fit without really coming back to this commission or to the city commission. Uh, I've been pretty adamant in holding their feet to the fire this year, and that is going to happen. Also, going forward, when it comes to, to the financial side, the city treasurer, the county treasurer, the city manager, and the judge executive are going to be looking at those items. Uh, Paul Naive is going to be doing the operational piece, but we are actually gonna be looking at the cash piece. Just FYI. Did I misspeak there, Mr. Hendricks? Okay.
I commend you for that catch, too.
Well, it's, I mean, it is what it is. If we wanna do it differently, we need to change the agreement.
Sure.
Any questions on B11, animal control?
Other than that, Ashley Thompson is doing a good job. She keeps the animals off my back.
B12 is services to children, youth, charity and welfare, and victim assistance department. Again, no real changes there. Is reflected in the agency funding schedule. B13 is parks. As Judge mentioned, the building construction number is a big number, but some of that, I mean, fortunately for those capital expenditures, they all have to come back to court. Budget's the budget, but there, that's not a guarantee that projects will be done. They have to come back to court if they're over twenty thousand dollars, and the court can proceed or defer or whatever. The court does get another op, opportunity as to whether or not they want to do those projects.
I might comment that this court has had to bring things that have been less than twenty thousand dollars back for this court to pass on, even though our, our administrative code says up to twenty thousand. Another thing that I would comment on, I believe that it will go into effect, but, uh, Mr. Treasurer of the State has moved the twenty thousand threshold to thirty thousand.
Would you sell that?
And we have decided to maintain the twenty thousand dollar threshold. That just gives us, not that we wanna micromanage, but it gives us that option and opportunity. Okay?
B14, again, is a lot of the agency funding, things that you've already seen. No real new, uh, capital projects. There's really nothing remarkable on either that page or the following page, B15. No questions, then we go to the road fund. When we already discussed the state reimbursable line and the, um.
Let me, let me back up and go to the airport. Is, is this our last year for the additional money?
It is.
Yes. And I would, uh, I'm not making this as a formal presentation because we're waiting actually to see what the transportation, uh, department could do for us. Is somebody trying to get in that door over there? I saw somebody stick their nose in. Uh, the, uh.
No, it's off. It should open up.
Okay, I just saw them look in the window and they didn't come in, so I know who it might've been. Uh, as you're aware, Commissioner, they have a pilot training program that they're trying to get off the ground. One of the issues that they have is with the pilot training program, and there's tremendous shortage of pilots. Uh, Cape Air will actually pay for the training of those pilots if they complete the course and work for three years. So there's a payback for that. Many of the kids are having, are young folks, and we, I think we got one that's fifty that has signed up for it. Uh, one of the, one of the problems that they have is that banks and student loans are not available for this kind of training.
Right.
So there is a problem with them coming up with the initial cash.
Right.
On our trip to Washington two weeks ago, we brought this to the Transportation Secretary's attention. We brought it to Senator McConnell, uh, all of our federal delegation, told them about the program that we have. And they were all excited about it because it's, it's something loc, we're doing locally, trying to address not only a local issue, but would address and could be used as a pilot program, no pun intended, uh, going forward for the rest of the nation. But there's a lack of funds. We asked them to see if they couldn't give us a mi, find us a million dollars somewhere where we could put it in the pot, use that money as tuition and money, and then the students would pay it back. So at some point, it would become a revolving, uh, account. Only downside to that revolving account is every now and then you're gonna get somebody that would borrow money and not, and drop out of the program before they completed, so it wouldn't get paid back. Uh, I think what I would like to see us do, and I've talked with the city somewhat, and there's no firm proposal. We're gonna wait until we see what the feds can do, but at the end of this, this hundred thousand dollars, which was for three years given to the airport to help, uh, fund and promote the airport, that we might consider taking that money and putting it into the pot for a couple of years, build up our own four, five hundred thousand dollar fund to provide funding for those, uh, those students. Not proposing that today, won't be doing it today, but at some point in the future, I'll be coming to you and see what you folks might think about that. And I think in, in my conversations with the city officials, they were, I think they were on board with perhaps doing that.
Well, I like the idea because this is, you know, I was, I was watching some news the past couple of days, and they were talking about student loans, one of the proposals of one of the presidential candidates. And, and, but one of the talking heads made the point, you know, a lot of these colleges is turning out worthless degrees. And, and yet these kids are, are borrowing this money.
Right.
And these people who make, who go through this pilot program, who successfully complete this pilot program, are pretty much guaranteed a job with Cape Air, and Cape Air is kind of a feeder, uh, in, into a better job.
Right.
And so the reality is, not only will the student loan debt be, be repaid by Cape Air, but, but you've got a heck of a, a career going forward.
The, the, well, I, I think it's, it would be a program that we should look at. I don't know where we'll end up at. And hopefully, the Fed will realize that it is a, a good deal and would use it as a pilot program for the, the rest of the country. I appreciate the airport, Cape Air, and if I'm not mistaken, the land, a fixed base facility here. They're all working together, trying to, and the other thing it does is, is it, it keeps the tower open.
Yes.
It, it gives us a reason for that tower to be there.
Yes.
And that's very important when we're trying to attract, um, commercial flights, so. Just, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Go ahead, Jim.
In the road fund, we talked about the, uh, paving and the reimbursable already. There's no real increase in revenues. You can see the county road aid, municipal road aid is very similar to the prior year. The fact that the reimbursable is down means that to stay about the same, had to be supplemented from the general fund, which it was. We've talked about the capital expenditure, so are there any other questions on road fund or engineering? Jail fund, again, you're pretty familiar with, we, we collect revenue for state prisoner housing, federal prisoners, and what's, what's labeled contract housing, which just means everybody that's not federal and state, which would include other jurisdictions, other counties. I think we got some, uh, Indiana prisoners occasionally. Those are a list of the revenues. Again, nothing really remarkable there.
Might, uh, interrupt there. One of the issues that we've got with our jail, we have a six hundred and ninety-nine bed facility, and it stays pretty much full. Uh, in a conversation with the jailer, uh, about three hundred and fifty of those prisoners are local prisoners, meaning they come from the city, uh, the county. Uh, in effect, what local prisoners mean is that they've been charged with a crime, they're incarcerated in our jail, but we get paid nothing. The public pays for, uh, their incarceration until they have been convicted of a felony or misdemeanor that carries time. Because we have so many folks in there, even though we're trying to increase our fed prisoners because we get more money from the fed, uh, we've gotta make a decision. What do you do? And the only place you can go is tell the state, we can't take any more state prisoners. That's why you see a reduction in the state prisoners. We, I would hope, and at every, and Commissioners, I think that each and every one of you, when we go to our conferences, we hear jails being one of the number one issues after pension probably, cost. And, and we, there is a hue and cry among the masses out there requesting the state pay us more money. They might be willing to pay a, a private contractor to operate a prison. They'll pay him fifty-five dollars a day, but they pay us thirty-two, thirty-three dollars a day.
Right.
So, and, and some of, one of the reasons I've, well, you don't give the same services that, uh, the private prison does. And I would argue with them that we give every service that's given by a private prison at Davis County Jail. Now, I don't know about the other jails, but I know that we have all the programs that they've asked, and we do an excellent job. So, anyway, that was just a side note.
I was curious, Jim, have we, I know a year or so ago, there was a, a big push, and, and I think, Judge, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that we, we came up with a, not fiscal court necessarily, but the prosecutors and the, and the courts came up with something they call Rocket Docket to try to push, uh, because anybody comes in our jail as a county prisoner until they have final sentencing, at, I guess, and then become a state-level prisoner if they're, if they're incarcerated long enough. And, and to where, to where they could be pushed through and not languished in our jails for a long time before the case is heard. And, and have we done any analyticals from a financial standpoint to see what benefit we've experienced on that?
I don't have, I don't have information that can do that.
Okay.
I, I don't have any, any hard facts or data that you could make an argument one way or the other. I do know that we do use Rocket Docket, uh, that it has saved folks. Uh, actually, what it does, it doesn't save them from being in our jail, it just shortens the time that they're in our jail.
Right.
Now, part of the problem with Rocket Docket is typically there is a, there is a, and I, I don't wanna misspeak, but there is an offer put on the table by the prosecutor, and typically, the defense attorney will not take the offer because they think they can do a better, get a better deal in jail. So that, that's part of the issue. One of the biggest issues that, that is, is the inequity in bail. Where, where we have bails presented for these low-level crimes, and a poor person can't afford five hundred dollars in bail, a rich person can put it up and not ever think about it. And, and there has been some conversation about doing away with that inequity, didn't, wasn't addressed this year. But that probably would be one of the biggest ways to empty the jails of those folks who are, have committed a low-level crime, nonviolent, low-level, you know, we're not talking about somebody that went out and beat somebody up, but.
Right.
That would be one of the biggest ways that we could, uh, release them on their own recognizance. Uh, and they're, they're coming up with an algorithm to try to use to see how that would, would work. You know, where they could, well, this person, he did this, this, and this, and typically, they run or they don't show up, so. But anyway, it's, again, the jail, as you can see, is one of those expenses that we really have no control over.
Right.
Uh, but we still have the constitutional responsibility to make sure that there's a jail in Davis County.
Right.
Or we could do what others do, which is contract with somebody else, send our prisoners to them. Eight hundred prisoners at thirty-five, forty dollars a day is pretty expensive. And here, at least, the jail is bringing in some revenue to offset the expense.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead, Jim.
B21 is the local government economic assistance fund. That first line, the LGED grant's just a placeholder. We may or may not pull any monies that we have there. I thought, we always have that just in case we use it, so we don't have to amend the budget. The COHOL is the LGEA money that you here talked about a lot. That is the money that we've received directly. You can see I've dropped out another hundred thousand dollars to reflect actual. When I first started, that number was probably over eight hundred thousand. It's continued to decline, and I don't even know if we'll actually collect the two hundred, but. The seventy thousand for mineral, that's not a incremental increase to actual, that's just, we received over the thirty-two consecutive years, so I'm adjusting the budget up to reflect. That's been pretty flat, pretty stable. Other than that, we, we spend the LGEA money on roads, as you saw on the road project sheet earlier, and that's it. Uh, B22 is the solid waste construction fund. We, they may have a need to spend some money out of that fund, so you can see I transferred in three hundred thousand dollars out of the operating fund so that we would have funds available. And you can see the, the detail, again, it's, it's, it's just some prep work they might end up doing next year, so.
Jim, while you say you transferred in, is that still transferring in from the landfill fund? I mean.
Yes.
From the operational side of landfill?
None of the solid waste funds receive general fund money.
Okay.
So, yeah, the transfer came from the solid waste operating fund.
Okay.
Next page is the solid waste operating fund. Um, revenues at the landfill have been really steady. A, as you know, they're up for a couple of reasons the last couple of years. One is the arrangement with Henderson that, that you know is, has been pretty good for the county. Uh, but another big one is we have been receiving in excess of two hundred thousand dollars from OMU for, I think it's flash.
Coal, coal combustion residual.
Yeah, whatever he said, what he said. And that's been, that's been up for about two or three years, and it's certainly included in the current fiscal year. However, that will not continue. So, there, there'll be a, a slight hit in annual revenues when that stops, but it will not.
That doesn't have its own line item then?
No.
Okay.
No, it's just included in the, uh, trans, uh, landfill line.
Just, eh, if you remember, the feds changed the way you handle flash, and they required it to go in a contained landfill. We negotiated a contract with the, with OMU. Uh, the contract said, you pay us regardless of whether you use it or not. Uh, they have been using it, but I think you've all read that where OMU is going, what, gonna close down the power plants. When they close, close those down, that, they won't need us any longer.
The other revenues are pretty fairly flat, and there's nothing extraordinary in the expenses. You saw the capital equipment that was involved, and as Judge said previously, there's no issue here with, currently with the revenues. We'll pay for all expenses without borrowing money. So you're currently in a very good position with cash at, at the landfill to, to make sure you pay all expenses and all capital requirements. And right now, there's about a $4 million cash balance out there. The, the reserve, I mean, I would consider a million dollars bare minimum. The financial, the financial analyst would look at that and probably expect you on a, on a $12 million revenue, it's probably going to be closer to $2 million, $2.5 million minimum for, for a reserve. But even with the $4 million box, you, you, as Judge pointed out early, you, you're going to buy a compactor in the next two years. You're going to buy a $700,000, $800,000 bulldozer in the next two years, plus whatever else the normal capital equipment requirements are, so. There's a, there's a pretty big need for the cash, because the court issued was that we don't want to borrow money to pay for equipment. So if you're not going to borrow the money, you got to accumulate the cash first, so.
We were able to construct the last contained landfill sale without borrowing money. We paid for that out of, out of our revenue stream. Any of you that's been out to the landfill lately has seen the, the CD&amp;D sale that we constructed. It's almost full. And, and we're going to have to expand that, I think. And depending on how well we do in marketing the landfill, we're going to have to start looking in the next couple of years at building a new contained landfill. And, you know, if we're going to do it out of, out of revenue, our revenues, we're going to have to do it over a period of several years. We, we don't contract out. A lot of times, we just use our own folks doing it. So we have to be proactive and look several years ahead in order to do that. So it takes some cash to, to do, but I was, I think I'm, I'm pretty proud, and I think Commissioner Wathen will agree. It's, it's pretty neat in that we've been here eight years and haven't borrowed any money to pay for anything at the landfill. The enterprise fund is taking care of itself.
Especially when you take into consideration the huge hits that come about every now and then, like you just mentioned.
Right.
And then the sale, and those things are, those things are, in and of themselves, each one of them pretty major.
The, the, it's a big operation out there. It's, it's amazing. We ought to, you know what, I just thought, we ought to, we ought to send an invitation to middle schools and grade schools to do field trips. Robbie, I'm sure, would love to take those.
Right, I tell you, Robbie would really enjoy that.
Yeah, we could send them out and tell them, Robbie, we've sent you some temporary employees for a while. Is there an age limit on them working at the, oh, never mind?
Let them run some of our equipment.
There you go. Okay.
B-26, the bond sinking fund. This is the fund we use to service the debt. The transfers in are fairly obvious what they are. Under the, under the bond payments, I mean, most of these are just reflective of the principal and interest that the payment we're going to make. The convention center line looks funny. It, it looks like it jumped up a million, too. Well, it really didn't. It's just that, for budgeting purposes, I was typically just budgeting the, the payment. But because we're going to retire that $980,000 debt in August, I needed to reflect the additional cash, which I just, I typically don't reflect it here because it's not necessary. But I need to get it in here so I can spend it. So that, that million-dollar jump is not real. It just looks like it jumped.
So, tell me, we actually had two issues on that bond, and one of them was at a very good interest rate, which is going away?
$980,000, we, we received rebates on both pieces. One got a 35% rebate. And then if you had a recovery zone economic development bond, which we did the.
Rebate on interest, not the principal.
Rebate, because the, the people who pay the bond pay the full interest rate.
Right.
And then we get a portion of the federal income tax rebated back to us. So that's, it's a 35% rebate on their payment. The, the RZED piece got a 45% rebate, so an additional 10%. So that's why we split it. We refinanced the first piece. It wasn't worth refinancing the second piece until now. So we've hit, we've hit the point where it's now beneficial to recall that bond. So we're planning on doing that in August, and that will, so that's why I needed to reflect this extra million dollars here so I can pay it out of budget. But it actually was sitting in there before. This wasn't necessary to budget it because we weren't going to spend it.
Are we refinancing the bond, or are we?
We are, we are calling the bond, terminating the bond, yes.
Now, the other piece that we refinanced, we cannot call by the, the bond, I mean.
Well, the bond covenants, we, the, you do that in exchange for a lower interest rate.
Right.
So we agreed we wouldn't call it early, but that, it's not going to impact anything.
Right.
But we, yes, you're correct. We cannot call that piece today. And, and as soon as we collect, as we did in the status report, as soon as we collect enough revenue that will service the remaining debt, we stop the tax. Put the money with a trustee, and they'll, we're done with it. Trustee will pay those bondholders off as they, as they.
We borrowed that money 2009 and 2010, two, two separate issues, I think.
No, we did one, we, we put the tax in two separate.
Okay, you're correct.
But we borrowed money at one time.
In 2009, for 20 years, which means it would be, had been paid off in 2029 if we did nothing. But as you, or 2030, 2029?
It was 2030. We, I think, I think we did it in Jan, Jan, I think we started in December of '09. It was issued in January of '10.
Okay. But, but anyway, to make a long story short, if it was going to be paid off in 2030, we're projecting and thinking that we can end up paying it off eight years early.
Yeah, you already, you refinanced a big piece, and you knocked six years off the term, for sure. So that piece, if you look in our, our bond schedule, shows a maturity date of 2024. But as you saw on the status report, we look, it looks like it's going to be at least two years earlier, right now.
Which is pretty cool. You're going to take an insurance tax from 8% and change back to 4% and change.
So if you look at our debt outstanding, there's only four issues. And the, the one issue split in two pieces, and we just talked about that. The convention center's got, you know, a remaining balance of about $8 million. Then the $980,000 will be paid off in August, so that piece will go away. So the convention center debt is still there, and we think will go away by 2022. The Western Kentucky University Administration Building is still there. There are only two payments remaining on it. The last payment will be made in October of 2020. So that goes away.
So it will be in our, in our 2021 budget, but it'll be paid out of, the 2021, '22 budget will not contain that?
That's correct.
Okay.
The detention center, operations center debt that's there, it expires in 2028. And there's no plans to touch that because that's paid for with the tourist tax. And then the other piece of the tourist tax is also 2028.
This, this may be a dumb question. Tell me who the trustees are that we're paying the fee to. Is that our bond council?
I just said that wrong. I mean, the tourist tax piece of this is paid for with the tour, the detention center, the detention center, operations center is not paid with that. I've looked at the wrong column. But they're, but they do expire in 2028.
Right.
Both, both of those?
The detention center's being paid for out of the jail fund, the operations center being paid out of general fund. But they also expire the same date, 2028. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So the trustee fund, the $3,000 we pay a trustee, what, who is that? What is that?
Actually, I don't think we've been paying it lately. It, it was just a trust, it could be various trustees.
Okay.
The way that the fees are being handled differently, we're not writing a check for them, so.
So the trustee is trusting us to.
Typically, almost all these cases, at this point, it's, they're, it's US bank.
Okay.
What's the expiration date on the complex, the first one that's listed on that?
2028.
So the detention center, tourism, and the complex, all three, 2028?
They are. I think they were all actually issued in the same vehicle, I think.
Gotcha.
Okay.
With that, that's all my comments on the bond fund. Any questions? Economic Development Fund, there's, there's just short of a, we budgeted a million. I think there's like $960,000 actually sitting there. This is just budgeted to make it balanced. We have to have revenues equal expenses. But as of right now, those expenses are not scheduled. So right now, you have, you have no liability to that money. It's just sitting there, so.
Which is disappointing, and it's kind of a way of saying we've not really had much economic activity in the past year. I would say that I hope to see that change now that we have Brittany Johnson as our new EDC director. She seems to be adjusting to this community and, and getting along very well in her job, so I'm hoping that changes.
B-28 is the Solid Waste Debt Service Fund. We're currently not using that fund. It's not active. I just put $1,000 in there to keep the fund open. Not really using it. B-29 is the Solid Waste Closure, and the next page would be the Solid Waste Post-Closure. I'll talk to them together. We fund this out of the Solid Waste Operating Fund each year based on tons. We put in a, a dollar per ton for closure and 25 cents per ton for post-closure. And those are required reserves, those are required reserves by the state for local governments that have landfill. So we were required to put that money in here. We are required to leave that money in here. The closure fund, at the point when you finish the sale, you know, you've got to have a certain slope with a certain, the, the grade, the, the soil on top of it cover, the grass you saw on top, all that is, is ordered as to how that's got to be done. And the, this money is for that. This money is to make sure that when we finish the sale, we can close it, that that money is there to, to, to close it. Post-closure would be things that happen to it after that, like erosion, slide off, anything.
Well, well monitoring, yeah.
So, so that's, it's just to make sure that the money is there, that those things, that the landfill can be taken care of once whoever walks off from it.
Rough, I'm sorry. I was just going to make the comment that when you give us a report every month telling us what our cash position is, and it averages about $28 million there, about roughly 25% of that cash position is really in a fund, in two funds that we can't touch.
Yes.
Okay.
Just curious, I've been, I've meant to ask this question multiple times, and I never think about it at the right time. But is there a maximum that we put in those, the closure and post-closure funds?
Yeah, there's, there's actually a fairly complicated formula based upon the, the volume of your landfill as to what this should be. If we capped out, we don't have to contribute anymore. But the way we try to do it is, we, we, we got it reduced before, right after y'all started. Mr. Smith worked with somebody in another county and saw the, what they did, looked at ours, saw quickly we were going to be overfunded if we stayed. We were at $2 and a dollar then. So went to the state, showed them the calculation, how much money we already had in the reserve. They agreed, and so they reduced our contribution from 2 and 1 to $1.25. Occasionally, you, you, you do review these things and look at them. They look at them to make sure they're adequate. We'll look at them to make sure we don't overfund it. But yes, there is a cap. It's a fixed amount of money based on the volume of your landfill.
Does that have anything to do with the size?
Does, everything to do with the size.
Okay. That's what you mean by volume?
Yes, sir. The volume, the, the volume that you can place in the landfill, yeah.
Any other questions?
It has, it has more, so we're paying so much for each ton that comes in. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
The customer, the customer is paying.
What I do at the end of the year.
Right.
Yeah.
No, what, what I do at the end of the year, you're, you're, I think you're confusing the other fee.
Okay.
The remediation fee. What I do at, like, right, probably at the end of April, is I look at how, every, for the last 12 months, I will look at the tons that were deposited in the landfill. I will multiply that tonnage by a dollar, and then transfer that dollar out of the solid waste operating fund into the closure fund. I will multiply it by a quarter, and multiply it, and then, and then transfer from the operating fund to the post-closure fund.
Okay.
That's how we fund it.
But, but the point that I was making is, in our cost analysis, in our charges.
Total gate rate.
Yeah, the, yes, we are including that fee. So the customer is paying that fee in their, from their tipping, yeah, the tipping fee, right.
Correct.
Okay.
Last one is the health insurance fund. We haven't raised this for a couple of years, and I'm monitoring it. We're going to be real close. I, I'd rather not amend the budget if we don't have to. But we're going to be so close, we may have to amend the budget next month, just so we don't blow it at the last second.
You're talking about amending the current budget?
Yes.
Okay.
We may, we, in this, in the current fiscal year, I don't know if we're going to make the 4.2, if we're going to go slightly over. So we'll, I'm watching it. It's going to be close. So, which means, and I'll show you the next schedule we talk about, we're probably going to need to increase that, because we've been close two years in a row, so I think we're going to blow through that. So the new budget's probably going to need to reflect an increase to compensate for that. Other than that, I mean, we're, the health insurance fund's doing well. We, for, for two consecutive years, we've just had high claims. It's, it's statistically going to happen. We, we should have four or five events exceeding a certain dollar threshold. We got more like 12 events. And that's, when you're self-funded, that's just what happens. So it's really not, it's not an anomaly, other than statistically, it's going to happen.
What's the reinsurance level that we're at now? Do you recall?
Uh, the specific?
Yes.
I think it's still 100, isn't it?
Is it 100 or 125?
Well, we talked about going to 100 and 1/4, and I can't believe, I can't remember if they did.
Yeah, I don't, it's somewhere between 100 and 125. And what that means is we're liable for the first 100, our fund. And then we have reinsurance with another carrier that will pay anything over and above that. What happens is when you have the number of high events, as the treasurer's talking about, that actually comes out of the cash pot that we accumulate with our premiums and our portion of it, so. And when they look at that, what you end up finding is that the cost for the reinsurance starts to go up every time you touch that point. Is that, is that the attachment point? Is that what they call it? Yeah, I love insurance. Okay.
Next, I'd like to talk to the, the sheet I handed you, or put in your positions entitled Summary of Changes to Initial Budget Work Papers. The changes that I am aware of that will be made to your, the, the work paper you have in your hands, the changes I know will be made before you see first reading are the following. I will decrease the 911 expense from $811,000 to $778,700. That's because I didn't know what it was when I prepared your sheet, but I now have their final number. Probably will increase the health insurance expense by $200,000 or $300,000 based upon my analysis the next couple of weeks. I will place an ambulance subsidy in of $60,000. I will change Appendix B, page 14. There's a subtotal that was not correctly picking up a new line. So that subtotal will jump from $140,000 to $330,000. And then I'll add back that $30,000 to the county clerk line on page B3. So those are the changes I know will be made to your work paper. There, the bottom section is, are there requested changes that we can discuss at your convenience? There's additional security cameras. There's additional security cameras requested by Commissioner Wathen.
If you would, Jim, let me just take this over.
All right.
And, and lead them through that.
Okay.
And A is some additional se- security cameras around the courthouse. Right now, Commissioner, you're more familiar than I am. I think we've got one or two and they all are on this side of the building. That's, and they have been beneficial as far as accidents that occurred out in the parking lot. But, uh, I think, I'm gonna let Commissioner Wathen talk about it if you want to about.
Well, a couple of things. I just feel like that, uh, the reason I asked to put that in there is, I felt like that if something happened and we wanted to go back and see if we could look at our security cameras and figure out who it was and what happened. And we don't have that ability right now on three sides outside. I will be honest with you and tell you that I didn't realize until this week that we had as many security cameras as we do on the interior of the building. My understanding is that if you're in the hall, any of our halls, you, you, you can be seen on our cameras. Which I didn't realize was as efficient as it is. It's just a, it's just a point of, of security and, and, uh, if something happens on the outside of the building, we have no record of it at this point. That's why I recommended it.
And I would tell you that it has been beneficial with the judicial center. We have security cameras over there and have been able to observe accidents. Uh, we've been able to observe people driving into the arm. We observed one bicyclist hitting it. That was kinda funny. Uh, but anyway, so there's, there would be an eighteen thousand dollar ad, a one-time ad that, that, uh, we could, uh, put in there. And personally, I don't have any problem with it. I don't know that we need to have a consensus now. We just talk among ourselves.
One last point on it I just thought of is, is we just got one individual to give us an estimate on the cost. Isn't that correct, uh, Jordan? So there might be more efficient or better ideas once we bid it, that somebody might come up with it. You know, in other words, this eighteen thousand is just one person's estimate. We may, it may actually be more or less than that.
Sure.
If we actually bid it, so.
But, I mean, we can put the eighteen thousand in and then adjust it one, one way or the other. And I'm gonna, so that's something that we'll be talking about in the next week or two before, Jim, before our final, before we're ready, when are you proposing that this budget come to us for first reading?
Uh, second, second meeting in May, which I believe is May the?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Yeah, so somewhere between now and the first meeting in May. In the next week or so, I'll be contacting, talking to you guys to see which direction you might wanna go on any of these proposals and, and are the budget, yes.
I thought you just said second week in May.
Second week, but I wanna get it.
I mean, second meeting.
Yeah, second meeting, maybe. I wanna get it all done and ready for us. We don't wanna run right up to it. Uh, I'm giving, Commissioner, if you would, you folks, you guys may have this already, have seen it. But the next proposal is regarding a request by the sheriff's department on additional revenues. And that first, the first item, uh, under B is salary increases for the court security. And I know I've got one other, there we go. The sheriff, over a period of time, has always, as you remember, requested additional funds for items. Uh, the sheriff is, he has a couple of ways of raising revenue. And one of those ways is, is serving papers. Another way is getting paid for collecting taxes. And after that, uh, his fa- default position is come to fiscal court and ask, ask for money. The.
If I, if I can ask real quick. I thought I saw where the legislature had, uh, raised the fee that, that he can collect or should collect on certain services he provides.
Yes.
From, I wanna say forty to sixty dollars?
Collecting court, or, uh, serving and process, yeah, yes. And that's, that's correct. It's probably gonna have a negligible effect.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
By, by far, by far, the largest, uh, uh, source of revenue is collecting taxes. I mean, the sheriff's job is what? To pro- serve papers and to collect taxes. I mean, that's, that's it. Law enforcement, we're fortunate in this.
Constitutionally.
Constitutionally, we're fortunate in this community that, that, uh, as, as state policing services have dropped, I think they responded to about eleven percent of the calls last year, according to Barry Smith. Uh, the sheriff's department has stepped up and provides road deputies and detectives and, and carries on those kinds of things. Unfortunately, over a period of time, uh, the costs have gone up. The other constitutional responsibility is to provide court security. And as you can see, the first item on, on the page regarding the Davis County Sheriff Office Personnel Increase Proposal has to do with salary increases for part-time unarmed court security officers and a salary increase for part-time armed court security officers. And these are POP certified, which is what a police officer or someone would get. They get their POP certification when they attend twenty-six weeks of training, roughly. Uh, so if this piece of paper, if you look at it, originally, the, uh, Major Smith requested a hundred and seventy thousand. That's the eighty-eight and eighty-two. Jordan and I, in consultation with Mr. Smith, found that we really didn't have a, a good salary scale or salary schedule. And I asked him to go back and look at it and give to the court a proposed salary schedule. And if you look at his salary schedule now, the way this is based, it's, you'll see the current rate of that employee, the proposed ra- rate where you're going. So in effect, all those unarmed are going to get about a four dollar an hour increase. The armed are going to get roughly a five dollar increase. And the salary schedule going forward is based on what they do and years of service. In order to do that, it, we found out that it was about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars was the required cost to do that first piece. What I believe.
You mean just A?
Just A and B. I'm sorry, A and B, the.
Yeah, that, that too, right there. But that number, a hundred and thirty-eight, don't equal these two here.
No, that's why I said it's a hundred and seventy was his initial.
Oh, this was his initial?
That was his initial. And then B was the result of me and Jordan meeting with him and putting some criteria out there that we wanted him to meet. And part of the problem was, you, you gotta be careful when you start giving raises that you don't give it all to one person and the other people don't get any. What this will do, the sheriff is hoping it will stabilize, uh, his workforce. Right now, they're having a hard time keeping people at eight dollars an hour. Think about it, eight dollars an hour. Uh, you're going, you're dealing with the very folks that we talked about who are in our jails. And, and on occasion over there, you've seen where people would run, escape, try to get out. They get pretty rowdy, deputy. I've not been there, but I'm sure you've been there. They get pretty rowdy some days when you say you're gonna spend ten years in prison. Uh, not only do the prisoners get rowdy, sometimes family and friends will get a little rowdy. So hopefully, this will help stabilize. And I can tell you, what happens is, and if, if you look at the two pieces I gave you, uh, the memorandum from, uh, Major Smith, what's driving a lot of this is the increases in the sheriff's, uh, call volume. He said a seventy-two percent increase in trips, and then trips means transporting prisoners back and forth to jail or to other places. Uh, and a seventy-five percent increase in miles. Part of what's driving the need for a stable court security force is that, think about it, we've just had two family court judges. The first one a couple of years ago, and if anyone has talked to Claude, he's been over there at midnight. And when they're there at midnight, do we have anybody there at midnight, deputy? We, we sure do. So now we have two family court judges. And with, with that increase, uh, a lot of times overtime, and it's not up to the sheriff. It's the judges, if they say we're gonna have court, the sheriff then has to provide somebody. If he doesn't have these part-time deputies, if he doesn't have the part-time personnel, who goes over there? Full-time deputy. And right now, we probably, I think Major Smith said on any one patrol shift at night in particular, we might have three road deputies covering five hundred square miles. Not, not a, it, not a lot of personnel. And when you have to pull one off the road and send them to court, then we have even fewer people covering. Particularly with reduction in service by the state police. And they're, I mean, their reduction in services, they're having a hard time finding people. You, you know the issues regarding their pay. Uh, it's, it's just a situation where, where we need more personnel and we're gonna have to pay them more. And if you recall, several years ago, in orbit, in order to stabilize the part-time workforce for our parks departments, we ended up having to start paying people a, a better salary. So I thi- I think one of the things, this proposal that Major Smith has presented to us on behalf of the sheriff does a couple of things. One, it increases the minimum wage that these people are making. And I think that's a good thing. A lot of times, people are working part-time, either they're working part-time as one of their several jobs. Or they may be retired and they're supplementing their social security. Uh, I appreciate the, the, uh, information that Major Smith shared with us. I appreciate all the data. But that's one of the things that I'm going to also recommend that we put into the budget, the hundred and thirty-eight thousand. I would tell you, um, the budget will reflect seventy thousand dollars roughly. I'm gonna break it into two parts, this, this budget. And that's because the sheriff's budget is on a calendar year. And that calendar year means that our budget, that, that we will be proposing covers six months this year, six months next year. I would propose that these salaries or this increase will become effective January one. January one, which means they would need half of it this year and our budget next year. He will need a hundred percent of that, a hundred and forty thousand. Second item is, uh, let's drop down from C to D, and I wanna talk about D. D is the full-time court deputy positions. Again, because you now have two family courts, we need somebody there who is full-time, providing security full-time. You can see what the cost is. I'm not gonna include anything in this year's budget. I'm not proposing it. I, I hope the sheriff understands that, that while we are his default, we also have a responsibility to try to pass a budget as close to being balanced as we can. Uh, I will continue to work and I'm gonna ask Commissioner Wa- uh, Commissioner Castlin, who is liaison to sheriff's office, to get together with me, Barry Smith and the sheriff and see if we can't work on that issue, uh, and see how we resolve it. And the last is the three full-time patrol deputies. Again, I'm not gonna recommend that we fund that this year. I present them to you because they are real issues that we're going to have to deal with going forward. If the state really wanted to help the sheriff's department out in funding their position, then they could increase the minimum rate that he could collect for collecting taxes. Right now, he's pretty much stymied by what the school systems have said they will pay. Now, they always would say, well, if you can show us that your cost is increasing or more than what we're paying, we'll be willing to pay you. Well, I don't know that you can ever make that argument, but an edict from my friends in the General Assembly certainly could make that. With, with the proposal that I'm going to make, when it comes into effect fully, we will be at about two point eight million for the sheriff. I don't know where we can go. I don't know how far we can go. Uh, because as you are aware, when we finish this, Mr. Hendricks is going to talk about this budget and where we're going to be as far as our, our cash position. At some point, we're gonna have to say no. I mean, at some point, we have to say no. But my question, and the thing that I struggle with, and I know you guys struggle with, how do you say no when it comes to the safety of the public? How do you, how do you defend that position? So, anyway, out of, out of that request, my, my proposal will be to you guys that we would, we would fund the necessary money to raise the salaries of those positions as outlined in that salary schedule. Um, Jim?
Judds, could I make a comment?
Yes, you sure can.
I agree with the A and B factors there. One thing with your eight dollar an hour employee, he could go to McDonald's or maybe get a twelve to fifteen dollar an hour job. Plus, we have to train them, so it costs us our money to train them. And if they're not staying very long, it costs a lot more money, cause you continually, uh, you know, hard new, train. And hopefully they stay longer. And the only other comment was on the full-time deputies. I know, uh, I feel like we need some, and I would just like to ask if you maybe reconsider just one this budget instead of three, because I know we could, I'm sure we could use three and safety is our most important issue for the community. And, uh, as you say, uh, if we've got three out, uh, on a shift and maybe one gets injured, but then you only got two covering the whole county. So that was just my only comment.
Commissioner, I will consider it, but I think in the, here in a few minutes, when you hear from, from the treasurer, you'll see why I'm making this gra- a gradual increase. Um, Jim, so I've covered A and B. Do you wanna pick up and go through? Uh, actually, I've got E is covered as well, the court deputy positions. I, I can go ahead. The, the fire department, the fire department proposed in their capital plan uh, two rescue vehicles, one for the east station, one for the airport. Those are special vehicles that carry all the medical equipment, the jaws of life and all those things where they re- respond to all, uh, of the accidents and emergency situations out in the county. Uh, then as well as a command rescue vehicle for the assistant chief. It's three hundred thousand dollars. The fact that we were buying an additional fire truck, uh, I could not in good conscience place those, those requests in this year's budget.
I, I have a question and you'll.
Okay.
You have an answer, we may need to get the fire chief in there, but it seems, it seems like, I mean, those three items that are right there. I thought that's why we sent trucks out. In other words, one of the questions I've, I've, I've asked on multiple occasions is why do we send, why do we always send a truck? This great big vehicle that can put out fires to, uh, traffic accidents. One of the rea- one of the things they said is, they have, they wanted to make sure they had these things on there. Some, the jaws of life and all those different things, but you're talking about, they wanna put them in this vehicle?
Let, let me back that up. That was just my own personal observation. I, I actually don't know what else would go in that vehicle, but if it's a rescue vehicle, I would think.
These are replacements. These are not new.
These are replacements, yes.
Replacement vehicles. They already have them.
But, but to go back to your, your question, the only answer I might be able to give you, and that, you're right, we probably need to talk to the chief. Number one, I'm not considering this. I would not propose this. I, I don't believe that we can afford it in this budget. But when they send that big fire truck, particularly to an accident, there's always a possibility of a fire. And I would think that's why. there's always a possibility of a fire, and I would think that's why they have the truck there, so that they could suppress the fire, spray down the road, do, do a lot of things. But to go back to your original question, I will defer to the chief, and, but we'll get you an answer. We'll, we'll have, but I agree with you, it's, it's.
I mean, if somebody has a heart attack in the ha- in somebody's house, they send a fire truck.
Right, they do, yep.
So, I mean, I certainly am not trying to lower our standard in any way, fashion, form, but, see, like, I thought maybe these were.
New, new, oh.
To go get.
They are smaller vehicles, they are rescue vehicles, and they're not full-blown, uh, fire trucks. But as to the treasurer's, uh, point, and thank you for bringing it up, they are just replacements. They, they already exist. The, uh, anything else? Okay, the, uh, of course, I've, I've come back to the three full-time patrol deputy position. The original cost is $400,000 a year, the second year and forward would be 282. The original 400,000 includes vehicles, uh, equipment. Uh, Commissioner Wathin, in our conversation, I don't know, several weeks ago, he pointed out that, that, that extra 200,000 shows up sometime in the future too, doesn't it? Because when they wear those patrol vehicles out, they're gonna have to come back. If they need them, they're gonna come back probably to us. But, uh, the two full-time court deputy positions, again, the 266, has to do with the training that's required, the equipment that's needed. It falls off to salary after that. We've talked about replacing the voting machines. Uh, that is an absolute expense going forward. We don't know when it's gonna happen. I'm hoping, uh, against all hope, that we will get some help from the state. They've never helped us in the past, so I don't know why they would start anyway. Probably when we have to replace the voting machines, they'll come and take the rest of the coal severance money that they haven't already taken. Uh, but that's a real issue going forward. I think in talking with, uh, Richard House, he thinks it's gonna be on the lower end because there is a push to consolidate voting precincts. So the fewer, fewer precincts you need, fewer machines. So, uh, I happen to have, depending on our special, uh, called meeting this afternoon, I know that some representatives of the voting machine vendor, and I think the clerk and the chief deputy are going to meet for dinner, and they've invited me to stop in. I'm not sure that I'm gonna have time to stop in, but I'm sure all they're gonna do is lobby and say, my machine's the best. I think we probably ought to buy them from Russia. They're already there, so why not make it easier, right?
I have a question about.
Yes, go ahead.
About the deputies.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Are the two deputies that are, are the deputies that, for the court?
Okay, yes.
Are they basically the, uh, do we, do they have to go through the same process if they hire them, that they would, training and all that?
Yes.
If they were the, uh, for the court deputies as they would for the patrol deputies?
Pop certified, yes, both of, they're the same, correct? Yeah, the only difference would be.
The cars.
The cars and, and that stuff, but the personal protection equipment, all those other things, pop certification. Gi- give me an example, uh, full-time court deputy, Kenny Riley, is he full-time?
Kenny Riley, Randy Loeb, that's a credit law, 34.
Okay, okay, when we have a trial, when the, when court's in session, that requires a full-time deputy there?
Yes.
Yes, so it's not a part-time?
We have a part-time deputy also.
Okay.
They were saying.
Right.
They work three days a week.
Okay.
And they would be utilized for a full-blown trial.
Okay. So, the fact that we have two family courts now, we only have three, we have three deputies that are signed full-time over there, and now we've got, so that's the issue.
We can have six courts.
Right, correct. Right, okay. And if we don't, then we're gonna pull one of you guys and send you over there.
They won't refuse you.
Right, okay, anything else? Uh, so there's voting machines, one of the things that we haven't, that's not there is, uh, at some point, we're looking at replacing the radio system and going from analog to digital. Uh, I know our consultant has been here talking with, uh, all the stakeholders. Uh, don't know when they will have a proposal back to us, or, or have their analysis of the systems that are in place and what we need to do. Uh, low end, you're talking about $5 million, high end, probably $7 million. Uh, that, it's, it's just, it's a cost. Uh, one of the things this court will have to determine going forward, and I'm not particularly convinced that, you know, trying to cover the last 1%, and Commissioner, we've always had this conversation. If you get 99% coverage per X, trying to cover that last 1%, maybe 10 times X. It just, you, you've got to balance the cost versus the results that you get. And I think this court has always been very good at that in doing an analysis, an overall analysis before we spend our money, and I expect that Mr. Johnson will do the same, that Mr. Hendricks will do the same, and, and bring us a proposal. But it's, it's in the future. So i- in the end, I'm gonna ask Jim to give us his analysis on this budget, our revenues, our expenditures, uh, and then, over the next few weeks, I'll be talking with each of you, uh, with some ideas how we, how we address it. So Jim?
Judge, what you.
I'm sorry, yes.
I have a question on that, do we fund that whole amount?
Yes.
Uh, so we don't get any help from anybody, or grants, or anything that would help us?
I would, I would.
At the radios?
I would, I would say I don't believe there are any grants out there that when the city went to the digital, they paid for it 100%. I'm not saying there aren't grants, and we certainly are gonna look, look for any and all grants that we can get. Yes, sir.
Yeah, there may be in the future, but I don't think there are right now.
There are none now.
Cause there's no mandate to do it.
Oh, okay.
Not yet, there will be, but not yet.
That doesn't make a difference.
I understand.
Never has in the past, has it, Commissioner?
Do you have a clue what the timetable would be when you say there's not a mandate yet?
Nope.
Okay.
I don't think it's fixed, it's, it's pretty, it's just.
One, one of the issues that you have when you do analog versus digital, a digital, you can put so many more streams on that same bandwidth because it, the digital has the capability to filter out. Where analog, you'll, you'll be breaker-baker, breaker-breaker, one night. Well, if he's saying breaker-breaker, I'm getting beat up by somebody in the basement, and I need help, and it doesn't get out, then we've put his life in danger, as well as the lives of the citizens, so. But at some point, we've gotta say, well, what's the chances that he'll get the same garble in the basement even with a digital? And the answer is, the potential still is there. It's just going to be much less, but it's still there.
Well, what you're gonna be impressed with when they get done, is they, they're not just talking this to them.
Oh, yeah.
They, they got maps, they got like phenomenal maps, Jordan was telling me. And they'll point here, so here's an, here's a place where y'all have an issue. Well, the reason is, because this plant over here creates so much no- and they got it, they'll have it measured. Here's your bandwidth, well, here's this much noise, and then, here's this much whatever, which is leaving you this much. And now, if you go to digital, it's not gonna change in this area.
Right.
Or if you go to digital, this will improve by this much. But these guys are gonna have that down to that detail. So, it's a lot more information than we would have ever been able to get for you to look and make a decision. You'll, it's, it's more of, it's a cost-benefit analysis, right? That's what it boils down to. As, as Judge just said, I can improve the final 10%, but if it's, it's, if it's like the flooding issue, yeah, by spending $15 billion, you might not wanna do it. So, but, but this won't be guesswork. This will be measurable, technical plans that will help you make an informed decision on whatever it is you end up. And then I would, I mean, my advice will be, if, you, you ask about the cost and when we pay, I mean, it's gonna be, if, if you do anything significant, you, I mean, my advice will absolutely be finance it. I don't think that's gonna be the kind of, of a cost that you wanna pay in one year. I don't, I, I just don't think that matches up with, with prudent financial. So I don't, I don't know that we'd wanna spend your money in a allocation in a budget for a significant amount for a radio system. Anyway, that's all to be decided later.
Okay.
Ready to move on?
Yes, please, uh, let's, in, okay. But I, I agree with, let me, yeah, I was, but then I got, I, I absolutely agree. This is one of those cases, it's a major purchase. We could pay cash, but we really hurt our reserve status if we paid cash. And it kinda, it's kinda like, you, I've saved up $25,000, I have that cash, and I can pay cash for the car, but I may need the 25. So I pay half on the car and finance, so we, it may be a combination. But I, I don't think over the next few years where, where we're at, that we're gonna wanna pay cash for it. So, yes, go ahead.
Well, the syn- synopsis is simply this. The, the projected increases in the fiscal year 20 budget, which are primarily due to the pension, to the jail, to health insurance, to your court security issue that you're going to address, or may address, that those handful of items must be paid for. And there's no, the funding, the revenue increase, the anticipated revenue increase simply does not cover the projected increases. So in a nutshell, that's it. When I do the analysis work, the hit to reserves for fiscal year 20 will be very close to $2 million.
To how much?
2 million. The sheets that we've given you detail those items, so you can, you can see exactly what they are, add them up, and see how close you get. And I know a couple of you have done that and got very close to that amount of money. So, and then going forward, it would be even higher. Cause next year, you got that million dollars coming in that offset the loss. Won't be there after that, so it'll jump by a million, if you change nothing, it would jump by a million. So, wi- with that, it's a math question, and the court gets to decide how they gap the funding, cut the funding, reallocate, whatever the court wishes are. But in a nutshell, that's, that's what, that's what this budget presents today, about a $2 million shortfall.
Give me, you have been talking on, because I asked you to, to our bonding agencies as far as what their recommendation in, in reserves would be?
Okay, it's not a simple statement, they, they don't look at it simple. So, I've gone through their calculation, and I had our experts look at the same calculation to make sure I'm looking at it correctly. They look at a handful of funds when they're looking at what, what, what is an adequate reserve. And, and in looking at that, what I've done, the judge asked me, what's our minimum? You know, if we got about 11 million in the general fund today, what's our bare minimum? And depending on what the other funds balances are, that changes, but in the worst-case scenario, I don't see how we could, you'll get tou- you'll get hit if we go below 7 million in the general. And that, that will change depending on what's in the other fund, so it could actually go up. For instance, they count that economic development fund. So if you spend all that to zero, now my minimum's 8 million in the general fund. So it flo- it floats, but, so somewhere between 7 and 8 today is my answer. We just, we, we should not go below that. The financial community will look at that as very negatively, is that you could not handle a short-term problem. Now, the good news for us is, we're low debt. But if we were loaded with that, then it'd be a real problem. But we're low debt, so that helps.
So, if we said 7 million, if we set that threshold as, as being the minimum that we wanted to go, and we are looking at, uh, $2 million this year, and let's say $2 million next year roughly, in the next two years?
Well, I think you're gonna be a million short current fiscal year.
Okay.
So it drops it to 10.
You're talking about this, 18, 19? 18, 19, okay.
And then 2 million more next year puts you down to 8.
Okay. And if you just carry that further, and that's with the normal increases that we receive in property tax and, and all the, the revenue stream, which is roughly 3 to 400,000 a year.
Those were factored in, yes.
And it, and most of that now is going to, uh, just, just simply cost of living increases in, in salaries.
And, and the normal benefit changes.
And, yes, and, and the other, yeah, not the increase in pension, but just the.
Health insurance.
Right, right.
Judge?
Yes.
I have a question, um, to Jim, that's not counting our additional increase in the pension, which just a few days ago, uh, we got word it is gonna be higher, uh, than, than first talked about. So, you, when you talk about this to me, and is that, that's not gonna include any additional pension?
The numbers I gave you did not have that factored in, cause we didn't know about it till two days, that's correct.
Okay. But I thought you said those are being pushed to the back because of the 12% cap?
I don't think they'll hit in this.
100%.
I don't think they'll hit in the budget year, but you're, if you're projecting forward, your forward just got worse.
Sure, sure.
So, with, with that being said, Commissioners, we've got three weeks roughly until we have to present the final version of the budget.
I'll need the final week to put it together.
Yes, so, uh, that's where I'm going back. Within the next two weeks, I'm gonna be talking with all of you regarding proposals on revenues, pro- uh, regarding proposals on additions or deletions in the, the budget. Uh, and once we can kinda come to a consensus of where we wanna go, then I will make some, uh, proposals at that, at that, uh, meeting to go along with the budget.
Let me, let me ask you, Jim, I'm just thinking about the pension and, and how retirements, uh, impact the numbers that they actually tell us. When, when people come close to retirement, or it seems like in the past that there's, there's a bump up? Am I right, or am I mistaken? That, that sometimes, like, if you were, if you were saying you were gonna retire, then, then they look at, they look at your situation, and, and we might have to pay more because you're closing in, or, or.
I think what you might be confusing that with is, if you increase my salary those last five years.
Yes.
They look at it to make sure that it's inside the normal realm of COLA.
Yes.
Or a, a legitimate promotion, not that, I think what they were seeing in a lot of jurisdictions where people were bumping up those people arbitrarily.
Yes.
To help their pension.
Yes.
And then that may, the, for a couple of years, though, they, they put that back on the court. Well, they modified that to last legislature.
Okay.
Now, it's, what it is, is if you get an extraordinary raise, it's no longer on the court. It's, the person doesn't get the pension for it. The person pays the price for that. So you can't, they, they, they basically eliminated what was a problem by saying.
It was called spiking, right?
Spiking, yes.
Right. Okay.
Yes, that's, that's no longer on us, you're correct, it was on us, but.
Cause I seem to remember in my.
They remedied that last time.
Okay.
We, uh, we received a bill for a couple of spiking issues, they were not spiking.
Yeah, it got really silly.
It was silly stuff where actually our employees were working overtime, helping us out, I know we had one employee that was sick at the scale house.
If you had someone who got sick this year, who got legitimately sick and had to take the family leave.
Sure.
Without pay. So their salary this year, let's just say normally they make 60, they made 30.
Right.
Then they came back, worked a full year, and next year, they call that spiking. Made you pay a penalty for that, and that's, that's absurd.
We, we didn't.
But that's the part I'm asking about, that, that they eliminated.
That has been elimi- that has been fixed.
Okay, all right. And we didn't pay them, commissioners, and, and the treasurer asked me, when did I want to pay them? And I said, "Pay them if they send a notice they're going to put the judge in jail. If they're going to put a commissioner in jail, just forget it." So, anything else?
No, sir.
Commissioners, any questions, comments while we've got the treasurer here?
Just like I say, Jim, I think you've done a good job, and the judge as well. I know this, this is a tough budget. We've got to make some major decisions, and just, you know, got to keep moving forward somehow. Thank you. And I want to say that, that-
I, I would, I would thank you, commissioners. I would tell you that, that the treasurer spent many hours in his office putting these things together and trying to get the, a correct analysis. One of the things that I've looked at is, you know, we have done a good job, now I'm trying to pat myself on the back and, and the commissioners, but we've done a good job managing our needs with the revenues, revenue stream. Last few years, those, and we did a good job in cutting out the fluff. We did a good job, if you all remember, on the health, health, I mean, we saved a half million dollars on our healthcare costs. We saved almost a half a million dollars on contracts for maintenance and those kinds of things. And, and we were able to save, and with the help of the jailer, we were able to reduce that jail cost. And what, but once we got those savings used up, then there was nothing else that we could, and we had to try to balance our budget with the natural accretion of taxes. And we get, as you saw in the city's budget, the comment that, that, you know, we, we always get a property tax increase because property values are reassessed every four years. But the problem that we have is that our, our revenue side did not keep up, or does not keep up with the expense side. You can cut the expense side, bring it back in balance with the revenue side, but anything that you cut out, you're just pushing to, you're pushing it forward. At some point, all of a sudden, you find yourself in the position that the state pension fund got into because of their failure to, to forecast properly. Or you get into the position the city of Owensburg got into, where they ran up against the wall a couple of years ago and had massive tax increases. So, you, you have to analyze what's going on. You have to forecast. I think our treasurer does a good job forecasting. And, and you, you have to, to, you have to make decisions. We, we, as the final arbiter of the, the citizens' tax dollars, we've got to decide what's in the best interest of this community. I think this budget does that. So, with that, I have sandwiches coming. If you guys will hang around, I think, is it 11:30? 11:30, we'll have some lunch, and I'm going to be in my office, be happy to meet with anybody that wants to talk. With that, this budget session is adjourned.